No, Ward 1. No, no, no. No, no, no. Ward 1. Ward 1. I don't know, but it's Ward 1.
Let me go ahead and call this regular meeting of North Rock City Council to order. Ms. Whitby, would you please call the vote?
Yes, sir Ross. White?
Here.
Taylor? I don't know. Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Vouch?
Here.
And Height?
Here.
And Whitcher is out.
Not present.
That would be correct, too.
Let me ask that we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman White followed by the pledge by Alderman Ross. If I could ask you now, please, to bow your heads.
Yes, Father, we thank you and we're grateful to have another opportunity to come to you with the business of the city, pray for wisdom in the decisions we make. Lord, we especially remember yesterday as 9/11 was throughout our whole country and, Lord, that it was a turning point for our country in many ways. And, Father, we are thankful for those things that have changed since that time and, Lord, we pray your blessing on those people that were involved in that. Once again, we thank you for this opportunity to gather in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved. Page, is there a second?
Second.
Correspondence from the -- that's been filed, is there anyone that could care to pull one of those?
Actually, the first one's on the minutes.
Excuse me? Oh, excuse me, you're right, the minutes. I apologize. Motion made and must be approved or submitted. Any discussion on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Now, we're in communications. Do I have a blanket motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone want to pull one? I think we want to do number 6, if I'm not mistaken. All right, 1 through 5, any discussion? Anyone wants to pull one? All right, 1 through 5, on the motion to accept and file, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Would you, Ms. Whitby, care to read the letter from Mr. Riley of the North Rock School Board?
This letter filed by Alderman White from Mr. Riley.
I assume that's what?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My name is John Riley, I'm a resident of North Little Rock, graduate of NLR schools and a parent of six children, graduated from NLR schools. In addition, I serve on the North Little Rock School District School Board for Zone 7. This is my eighth year. I am writing to each of you today to express my deepest concern about the current state of this community, our schools, and to solicit your support of our upcoming request for funding to support new physical assets for the North Little Rock School District as an investment in our community. You may know the State of Arkansas did a statewide facility study five years ago. This study generated needs and requirements school districts have to meet to stay within the State of Arkansas standards of warm, safe, and dry. These standards are not the standards assigned to new facilities, which are much higher. Over three years ago, the projected cost required to satisfy state standards for the NLR district was $100,000. The current condition of our school facilities did not evolve overnight. A new school has not been built in the district in over 40 years. The past cannot be changed, but the future of this community and its schools can be impacted by leadership on our part at critical times like these. Today, due to the enormous cost associated with just maintaining the current structures and responding to the necessities mandated by the state, the school board retained consultants and with them and the community produced a master plan for the district facilities. This plan is comprehensive, holistic, strategic, and necessary to save our schools and our city. Rather than spend over $190 million to maintain our deteriorating stock, it has proposed a plan that will address every building in the district and while it is currently estimated to cost approximately $207 million, it is actually less expensive for the district than the meet-the-standards plan because the state funds for this program are higher than for just repairing. The key here is the plan will also produce savings that can be redirected back into the debt service. This savings is accomplished by fewer campuses and best of all, better achievement for students by reducing the number of transitions between campuses. The school board also expects improvement in achievement from enhanced environments, which research says will be as high as 26 percent improvement. We can be proactive and address the problem of failing infrastructure quickly or eventually be forced to find funding for repairs and again and again as our buildings age further and our finances plummet, which would be an absolute loser for our children, education, and the future of our community. New state-of-the-art schools and world-class education services will draw people and businesses to our community. The school district can achieve the vision of world-class schools for world-class students, but school patrons need your help. The school district has waited for a better economy or the sunset of a sales tax or the city not to require a sales tax to move on a millage. The school district could not do this without a plan and school districts are bound by state law to use property tax to raise funds. The school district now has the plan and cannot wait on the economy or the possibility of a sales tax conflicting with these efforts any longer. A millage election cannot be held until there is assurance from the State of Arkansas that matching funds will be approved. The state facilities department is already excited because NLR is the first district to approach a strategic facilities plan statistically, in fact, the first and only that we presently know of. The approval of state funds will not occur until early 2012. Further, state law precludes a school district in the month party primaries are held -- a school election in the month party primaries are held, so the millage will have to wait for primaries to be set and then the millage election will move forward. Currently, the school board envisions a February vote. While the city is contemplating a sales tax for the fairground and would include the schools, if the school board agreed and the board appreciates the thought of the sales tax for the schools, if the sales tax is for four years, the district would need approximately $27 million per year to accomplish the master plan and it is doubtful a portion of any four-year sales tax would generate this sum. Consequently, the school board is fearful a sales tax election, including the schools, would leave the community thinking they had funded the master plan, which would still lack huge sums. Even if the necessary sums were possible through a 30-year, $7 million per year sales tax, this all presumes the legality of the sales tax funding could be confirmed. The school district bond council currently refuses to underwrite indebtedness tied to sales tax funding and would require an attorney general's opinion. Further, the school board is fearful that a sales tax election could adversely impact a millage election, whether the schools are included or not. The success of two tax elections of any kind, back-to-back, seems improbable. As community leaders, I am confident we are of one vision where NLR has the best schools in the region and consequently attracts new residents and students, continuing our legacy of excellence within the state. As examples, NLR sends the most honored students to the University of Arkansas of any district, having the University of Arkansas's first and second African-American president of the student body, as well as one white male and one white female president of the student body in the same span of years. We need to produce more graduates who return home and bring new ideas, business, and prosperity with them. They are more likely to return if excellent schools are present. The decision is apparent when each of us, as community leaders, are given a choice of excellent, highly-regarded schools or a fairground. Time is running out for our schools. North Little Rock schools and the city cannot prosper without the help and leadership of community leaders like you. A successful millage election will not happen if you are not in full support of the plan and its goals. While still fine-tuning millage projections and cost estimates, as well as continuing to look for operational savings within the plan, once complete, the school district will have final documents available for each of you. I urge you, when you consider any new taxes, please stop and consider our schools and students first. We know the size of this project will also impact our community in many favorable ways beyond the obvious benefit to our students. Many people would be provided work and paid for professional services accomplishing this, the largest task ever undertaken in the district and perhaps the city. Our neighborhoods will be enhanced, city residency will be increased, and property values will rise. Your decisions on this master plan will impact the city of her schools for the next 50 years. Put schools first and help us, help our students and our beloved North Little Rock. Sincerely, John Riley.
Do I have a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Any discussion? Is there a second on that?
Second.
Yeah, I don't think there's a question that this council and this community to a person certainly supports our public education and, you know, would look for ways to partner as we have in the past and moving forward what is indeed a very high and worthy effort on behalf of the district. And I'm sure that whatever we decide to do as a council with regard to a possible sales tax, that that will be done in the spirit of cooperation if we choose to go forward and do everything we can to support, if that sales tax issue is adopted by the council, we'll do everything we can to support this community in a way that will make strides toward continuing to achieve the excellence that we've been able to do as we've worked in the past. So I'm looking forward to, you know, the decisions that we have to make and looking forward to continuing to work as a partner with the school district without a doubt. It's an extremely important part of the community and one that I had a chance to take my two granddaughters to Lakewood Elementary this morning, so I've got a personal stake in their future and I'm sure my grandson, who is now B3 in October, will be following in his sister's footsteps. So we feel committed to that cause and from all sorts of perspectives, I can't agree more with most of what John Riley said. I do believe that the people of this community would support what they feel is needed for this community at a time that they're asked to. They have in the past and I'm sure they will in the future and we look to be a good partner. With that, on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Okay, we -- did we have, Ms. Whitby, anybody to sign up to? We've got a public hearing, I know Ms. Ross, on you and Ms. White's legislation. Do you want to go ahead and -- well, let me -- let's do this first, if we can, and then we'll go into this public hearing. I think we all know, as was alluded to in the prayer, about what yesterday was and 9/11. I don't think any of us, you know, can not have that in the forefront of our minds. You know, one of the most terrible things that has happened to this country and certainly in this century and maybe the biggest part of last century took place 10 years ago in New York City and this country was united like it's never been before. That unity, you know, at least in recent times in Congress, has somewhat been divided and I think all of us, you know, feel that, you know, that unity, as it's symbolized by our flag, is extremely important and we need to be mindful because of those three grandchildren I have and the children and grandchildren that all of us have in terms of looking to the future. But in trying to remember, I know Alderman White talked to me this morning and has a short video, I'll let her introduce it, but it certainly reflects what spirit that this country has and that energy, you know, can be directed with certainly leadership and you combine the two and there isn't anything that we can't do. Alderman White, if you want to introduce the video, I think we're ready.
Well, the video will speak for itself, but I hope it serves to refresh all of us and keep us mindful of the direction that we need to continue on even the day after our 10-year anniversary. We continue on as a country strong and anyway, I'd like to just have the video played. Thank you.
In combat, a banner is really important to a soldier. I guess it's significant for a couple of reasons. First of all, it stands as a symbol. It symbolizes something that is huge, something bigger than the soldier himself, something bigger than life. It symbolizes a cause. It's that cause that then motivates him. And I guess the second reason then that a banner is important is it stands to inspire. Not only does it stand as a symbol, but it stands to inspire that soldier to really get outside of himself and do something that's not even normal or natural. It's natural behavior to want to preserve your own life, to hide when somebody's shooting at you or trying to kill you, maybe even to run away. But when the soldier considers that inspiring symbol, the thing that that banner represents, it motivates the soldier to do something that's not natural, to go against his nature and to actually charge out and face this enemy that wants to take his life. You know, we all face battles in our own lives, battles every day, that we're -- we have to look to different banners that help us get through those battles and endure them. For some people, it's as simple as maybe their favorite sports team, you know, that symbol that it represents will inspire them to do something they would normally do, like paint their faces up or put on weird clothes and act silly. But then, maybe it's more serious than that. Maybe your banner is your family. I know a lot of people will carry pictures of their family in their wallets so that it will remind them of why they're working such long hours or why they're spending or saving the way that they're doing it. Maybe your banner is a religious or a spiritual symbol like a Jesus fish on your bumper or a crucifix around your neck. You know, the best example that I can remember in recent years of a banner is right around 9/11. We all remember that day and experienced the horror as we watched the towers fall. We experienced the pain, death, confusion. But then, in the middle of all of that, we also watched as those firemen put up that flag. And man, we were inspired. For the first time in my life, I really saw a united States of America as people were motivated to go out and sign up for military service. Some were motivated to maybe just put that banner up on their place of work or their house or their car, and still others were motivated to get out and actually vote. A banner, whatever it is, it's powerful, it's an inspiring symbol, but most of all, what makes it most important is the banner that helps us stay in the fight.
I know at staff meeting this morning, you know, I know we didn't have any formal recognition of 9/11, you know, because it's such a personal thing with all of us and I want to thank, you know, Beth White for bringing that short video to us. You know, we are sobered by the recollection of what took place and at the same time, you know, I think we are, as a country, more determined to move us forward as a nation and to use what we remember as a pathway to understand how important it is that we don't forget the everyday lives of people who are touched by, you know, certainly a tragedy that we saw like 9/11, but individual and much smaller tragedies that we face in life, that government does have a big part and certainly city government a significant part. So, you know, I thanked all of our department heads and asked them this morning if they would convey the message to all of their employees to reflect on what a great country we have and what blessings that we enjoy and yet those come with a price and that that price needs to be paid and does with many of our folks every day by the sacrifices that they make. So God bless the United States, God bless our country, certainly this community, and may we always remember not only the sacrifices that those made on those that paid the supreme price on 9/11, but, you know, I'd hope that we'd expand it to every day, the prices that paid from, you know, the electric department employee that lost his life and the only one that we've had, and thank God, in our community, at least on our city payroll, but that our policemen and firemen and our emergency services responders and our street department and our people at utilities accounting and on and on, you know, that feel their service makes a contribution and all those who are involved with brick-by-brick building this country. With that, thank you very much. Now, we're, I guess, on our public hearing and Alderman Ross, you want to introduce O-1151 and open it up for comments?
These are a set of ordinance that we've been working on, renewable energy concerning solar panels on houses, solar collection units, wind turbines, anything that can be used for renewable energy or alternative energy. I did meet with the Green Committee this week and they have appointed a smaller committee to go over these things and one of the goals is, and I know that there's no way of, you know, totally allowing everything because there's going to be some obstacles that they're going to encounter, so we're trying to find something down the middle. And they said that they would work on this as fast as they can and I tell them, I don't care if we hold it six times just so that we get it, you know, you can't ever get it perfect, but as close to right as possible. So we're just open to public comment and I'm not in any hurry and I know Alderman White's not in any hurry to move on this either.
With that, we'll open the public comment section on our hearing on O-1151. I know we have a heavy agenda, so I know we've got a lot of folks out there that I'm sure are interested in this and I've been a tad bit facetious, but nonetheless, you're welcome to comment on it if you choose to. And not seeing anybody coming to the microphone, do you want to recess the public hearing until next time or do you want to?
We can -- I mean, we just hold it. I'd like to wait until the Green Committee comes back.
That's fine. Why don't we do this? Why don't we go ahead and adjourn the public hearing? I know we've had one, but we'll still have an opportunity because it'll be on the legislation that if anybody wants to speak to it individually, that they can sign up during the, you know, the public comment section and to do it that way. So we'll go ahead and adjourn the public hearing if that's okay.
Absolutely, and like I've told them, if we have to go back and rewrite the whole thing, I have no opposition to this. This is something that we don't want to, you know, move too fast on.
So with that, we're adjourning the public hearing, but still recognizing that anybody can talk, speak to this in our, according to our rules, at any time they want to, just simply come and put it on their list and they'll have an opportunity to address it. So with that, I'll go ahead and, you know, with your permission, indicate that O-1151 will be held and that comments will be accepted in accordance with the, you know, normal rules that we have and I'll adjourn the public hearing. Ms. Whitby, do we have anybody sign up on any legislation? No signs? All right, let's go ahead and I assume we're holding -- let's go ahead and go to unfinished business.
R-11138, Mayor Hayes.
Code enforcement's asked me again to hold that, so I think that takes care of old business. Let's go to new business.
Yes, sir, R-11146, Mayor Hayes.
I'm going to call that and the next three are donations. All of them are pretty much the same. I'll just go ahead and explain that and then ask the council's action. Extension of Third Street, we needed a little additional right-of-way, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Boles, and that this is simply a donation of that additional right-of-way so that we can move forward to building Third Street in accordance with the plan. So with that, please call R-11146.
A resolution accepting the donation of certain real property located on West Third Street at its intersection with Parker Street in the City of North Little Rock from North Bluffs Development Corporation.
The motion?
Come in.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-11147, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the donation of certain property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of West Third and Parker Streets in the City of North Little Rock from North Bluffs Development Corporation.
Motion?
Come in.
Second. Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-11148, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the donation of certain real property located on the south side of West Third Street, west of its intersection with Parker Street in the City of North Little Rock from North Bluffs Development Corporation.
Come in.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-11149, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appointing Ron Harris to the position previously held by Eddie Armstrong on the North Little Rock Planning Commission.
Come in.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
And Mr. Harris is here.
I know that and we, I know I had a chance to visit with Mr. Harris and certainly both of our council members and wanted to tell you, Ron, that I know all of us are glad sometimes the people, you know, out in your neighborhood feel that we don't think you're a part of the city, that you're a part of Malmell, but we know much better and certainly we know better because of your activity in the past and supporting this community and the activities that we have and we are very appreciative. I'm, you know, speaking on behalf of the two council members that are with us and the endorsement by the council and we appreciate and look forward to your service.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes and Alderman. I appreciate your vote of confidence and so I look forward to serve and hopefully with my utility background and my close association with the building community, I can be an asset to the city of North Little Rock.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item is O-1153, I believe that's held. O-1154, Alderman Baxter.
Please call it.
Or no, wait a minute, I messed up. O-1153 is not held. Sorry. An ordinance amending subsection 1890 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code to adopt the National Electrical Code 2011 edition.
Let's go ahead and take that to second reading. I don't know that we're in any big hurry, just in case anybody has any questions, are we, Mr. Osborne?
[inaudible].
All right, so just in case, I know this is, again, kind of a thin night, so why don't we take it to second reading and then hold it and act on it to the next council meeting in case anybody has any questions? Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
An ordinance amending subsection 1890 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code to adopt the National Electrical Code 2011 edition.
All right, I'll hold it to the next council meeting.
Okay. Now, O-1154, Alderman Baxter. An ordinance accepting the dedication of Burkehalter Haas Road in the City of North Little Rock.
Motion to suspend the rules and place it on the second reading.
Motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Mr. Burkehalter is on my Board of Directors and just to remove any perception of influence or any other thing, I will abstain from any motion on this.
Okay, I understand and certainly respect that.
And Height?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor Houches.
Okay. An ordinance accepting the dedication of Burkehalter Haas Road in the City of North Little Rock, second reading.
Motion to suspend the rules and place it on the third reading.
Second.
Motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Abstain.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of Burkehalter Haas Road in the City of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
On the question?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Yes.
Fauch?
Abstain.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Abstain.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Next item, O-1155, Alderman Taylor.
I've not talked to Alderman Taylor regarding this legislation. I believe he's out of town.
He's on, I just, probably not supposed to be texting, but I was worried about him. I text him, he's on his way.
He's on his way?
Yeah.
You better get here fast.
I know, this is the last one. Well, he's driving, so I'm not going to text again.
So, you know, we can move forward on it, I mean, legislation.
Why don't we go ahead and take it to third reading and then if he's not here, then I would suggest that, looking at the nature of it, it doesn't appear to me, Mr. Bowles, is this yours?
Nothing to it.
Is this something that, can you give us a little report on this?
Can you give a report on it? It's Alderman Taylor's. He, we have a situation where a real estate school is wanting to relocate from one parcel to the other. It's either C2 or C3. He thought that that's such a light use that it ought to be allowed where art schools and other light type commercial schools, professional schools are allowed. So, he had sent forth legislation, but I didn't talk to him about it, but he just brought forth legislation to amend the zoning to allow real estate schools in these two zones, C2, C3.
I assume he didn't bring it through planning for their recommendation?
No.
Do you have any response? Maybe I'm not, maybe I'm putting you in a, well, we'll tell you what, we'll just let Alderman Taylor talk to us when he gets here. I mean, it's fine with me if we want to take it to the third reading, you know, you're a seatmate.
Well, yeah, I think we can go ahead and take it to the third reading. I think if he had wanted us to hold it, you know, he would have advised me and, you know, and I spoke with him last night and he didn't say anything about holding it, you know, so we can move forward with this.
All right, I'll take, Alderman Height?
Question, did it not go through planning? That's not normal, correct?
Oh, I don't know that.
Normally, doesn't this require one year planning?
No. No, this is a, I don't believe, and of course, our city attorney can advise us otherwise, this is a change in the law and I don't know that this recommendation, I mean, we could ask for it, but I don't know that that's mandated.
To me, it's minor.
Yeah.
You know, and council has in the past bypassed planning and sponsored legislation, so, you know, we can.
Yeah, I don't even think this is required to go through planning. It's not a part of the procedure or anything. Periodically, we ask for advisory opinions, but, or at least input, but I don't know that this is something that, you know, is a mandated procedure by any means.
I don't think Mr. Bowles has a problem with it.
In my understanding was there was no, there was nothing that raised a red flag in the city attorney's office.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll take that as a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
I haven't read it yet.
Oh.
Oh, well, good. I'm sorry, go ahead.
An ordinance amending Article 21, Table of Permitted Uses of Ordinance Number 7697, the North Little Rock Zoning Ordinance, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
An ordinance amending Article 21, Table of Permitted Uses of Ordinance Number 7697, the zoning, or the North Little Rock Zoning Ordinance, third and final reading.
Alderman Ross?
Basically, all this is, is just including a real estate school under schools, I mean, it's no, a real estate school is no different than an art school, a music school, dance, martial arts studio. And I did talk to Mr. Spencer in planning today and, I mean, there still will be required the, you know, a certain number of parking spaces with anything else. So, it's, I mean, this is just basically a technicality in my opinion.
And I'll take that as a motion to adopt on third and final, if that's all right.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Includes new business.
You can text Alderman Taylor and tell him if he wants to come, we might record him present, but, you know, if he wants to slow down, he's certainly welcome to. Any council member? Care to?
I just wanted to say Crestview Park, I wanted to thank you for the playground equipment has been installed. It looks great. I've asked Mr. Rhodes if we can have a ribbon cutting. There's a few little things, little, you know, cleanup details around there, but it looks really nice.
I have to say that, you know, on the way to work, I drive, I appreciate you bringing that up. On the way to work, I drive by there pretty much every morning and I kind of got concerned about, you know, what the work had been done and no playground, no playground equipment. There was a playground, but that was it. And so, I'm glad we were able to, you know, sort of settle in on what we thought that small space would be most well, you know, magnetized for young kids and I can say that yesterday I drove by and there was a neighborhood gentleman there with his two daughters and mentioned to him how we'd been, you know, waiting for that time when we could actually open that playground and he pointed to his two young daughters and he said, well, you have their endorsement. And they were coming down the slide, so.
The little mushrooms are not installed yet, but the mushrooms should be coming soon.
Coming soon. So, a little bit more to add, being a senior, I was very, I saw one bench, I hope there's two.
There's two. We need a trash can, but that's beside.
We need a trash can. So, just a few odds and ends, but those young people were, those two young girls, two and three years old, something like that, were having a good time and, you know, it makes you feel like the effort was very much worthwhile and I thank y'all and we're glad that it's there and, you know, we all have an affection about our parks that we grew up in and that's one that I did and now it's more usable by our folks, so thanks a lot. Let the record, before I turn, I asked Alderman Robinson, she raised her hand next, let the record reflect that Alderman Taylor is present? We just passed your legislation, Alderman Taylor. It was your reputation that carried the day, yeah.
The folks out the east end of town are still concerned about having a fire station and I mentioned to them that I would mention it tonight so that you can address it.
Well, one of the, a couple of things, you know, because we are regularly asked about that and, you know, if we're able, essentially, there's the new President's Job Act that was announced and sent to the senate, or sent, excuse me, sent to Congress today, I understand, has some funding that very well could be used for first responders and, you know, as we examine that, I guess to answer the question quickly, we don't have the funding, you know, to, may, we may be able to find the funding, you know, if, you know, to build it. We've got, you know, applications in for grants and we'll maybe take, try to take advantage of the new legislation. The bigger problem is, you know, the 13 or 14 firemen that it would take to man it on a regular basis. We do not have the funding for that and yet we may, in discussions that we talked about a little earlier with regard to the sales tax, if we go forward, that would definitely be a part of it. So, we may have an opportunity to vote on that. You know, that would beg that, you know, of course, Little Rock's election is tomorrow, you know, they have a portion of it that goes for capital and a portion that goes for operations and obviously, you know, as we move forward in our discussion, and I'm going to try to find a timetable, I know it's pretty quickly if we're going to try to do it this year, because I don't think we want to do it much later than the first half of November, if we want to do it at all. And so, we're going to look at the city attorney, with the city attorney to decide what kind of deadline that we would have to do if we're able to call an election by the middle of November. And without a doubt, that would, that would be a part of it. So, a fire station and the construction of that would, at least in terms of what my recommendation would be, would be a part of the opportunity for the people to vote on.
Okay.
Alderman White?
Just one announcement, this Saturday on the 17th is Dark Hollow Days. They have a parade starting at 10 o'clock and I know there's fire, I think there's supposed to be a fire truck in it, we're not sure, but anyway, Union Pacific is for sure having some vehicles in that and good food and we're going to have a fit to live display there, too.
You know, in further responding, and I'd certainly underline Dark Holidays, you know, we, you know, we have been able for the last two years to reduce our electric rates for our citizens, 5% residential on both sides of each year and then 3% on commercial. You know, we're not having the best year with our hydro plant, you know, we're trying to manufacture some water. If our new planning commissioner can figure out a way to get water coming down north of Murray Lock and Dam, we would certainly beg that to happen. So, you know, our challenges remain, you know, with the ability of that utility, which we're very pleased has been able to help us more in being able to both reduce rates and assist the city and, you know, we're going to, I guess, ask council, when you're saying your prayers, pray for rain in Oklahoma, that, you know, they probably need it worse than maybe we do, certainly Texas in terms of the drought. But any event, you know, with opportunity comes challenges. Any other council member? Alderman Height?
Reminder of why that our one and only tenant of Dicky Stevens Park is going to be playing for the Texas League Championship starting, actually, starting tomorrow night in San Antonio, play first two games there, but we're guaranteed at least the third game here on Friday night and the fourth or, and our fifth game, if necessary, Saturday and Sunday night. And so, our Arkansas travelers, North Little Rock's Arkansas travelers are, have a chance to put the Texas League banner up on, up on the flagpole there this weekend. And just one comment, Mayor, about Crestview Park, I think you can probably remember this, that how many of the snow sledding trips we made up, down Crestview Park and survived all of those back in the days when, when that was probably the steepest hill within walking distance of our homes, so, anyway.
I can, you know, I mean, you got to picture this, there are two little, two little jumps as you go down Crestview Park terraces, if you would, and I can remember, you know, going down one and all of us know the old sleds had handles on them that you could steer with. I was sitting up when I went down one and I went about five feet in the air. When I came down, we hit so hard that broke both the handles, but still did not fall off the sled. Now, talent, you know, and a little bit of idiocy, but certainly, you know, talent and luck. Any other council member? Alderman Ross? And then, well, Alderman Fauch and then Ross?
One of my collateral duties in my job at Pathfinder is to organize and run the annual charity golf tournament and given the climate of the business world lately, a couple of teams have not been able to participate this year, so if you're interested, contact me and I'll give you the specifics and see what we can go from there. It's a fun, fun, great day for a very good cause.
Can you explain a little bit about it?
It's a four-man scramble at Southern Oaks Country Club in Jacksonville. We do one round only. It'll be Monday, the 26th. Lunch, fun, beverages of whatever choice and some.
What kind of cost are you looking at?
It's, it's a charity, so it's a little higher than most other organizations to charge and I'll be happy to discuss that.
You got a live one on the other end of the phone, okay. Any other council, oh, yeah, Alderman Ross?
Yeah, I've noticed a lot of people are already getting their leaves out to the curb right now and I just want to remind everybody that the leaf trucks are not running right now, so those leaves are going to be sitting a long time and it rains and they're going to be going down in our drains, so don't put the leaves out on the curb.
And maybe, let me, I appreciate you mentioning it, I had not noticed that, but they will pick them up if they bag them, so.
No, they're just loose.
No, I understand, but I'm saying that if they are out there, then we may let them know that they still have an opportunity to have them picked up, but they'll have to put them in bags because it'll be probably several months before we actually start picking them up. So, Mr. Sisson, if you could help me remember to, you know, Mr. Ford, know, you know, that if we do, as they're out there, see leaves on the side of the curb, to make an aggressive move to let the folks know that we'll carry them away if they bag them, but we're not picking up leaves yet.
We'll do that, sir.
Okay. Any other council member? Alderman Baxter?
Yes, Mayor, just like to publicly say thanks to Ms. Bowman, who will be leaving us Friday, as she'll be leaving her position as the Director of the Community Development Agency. I don't know if she's over across the way or not, but just attend the CDBG program and wish her well in her new endeavor.
We have, I know that's a selection I have an opportunity to make. We have a job description and I appreciate you mentioning that, not only because of Ms. Bowman, she's not going very far. In fact, she'll be a little bit closer to City Hall than she was over at the City Services Building. She's going to be officing at the Argenna Community Development Corporation, which is across the street. So, we may lose her talents as Community Development Director, but we certainly will retain her as Director of the Argenna CDB. And if anyone's an earshot that has an interest in that job, job description's going out and Personnel Department, you know, will be aggressively trying to find a replacement so she'll be able to help with, continue to help with the transition because she's going to be in the neighborhood. But thanks for mentioning it. Mary Beth is a terrific lady and we're certainly proud of the service that she's brought to the agency and, again, we're not totally losing her, we're just, she's going to wear a different hat and we're going to be out looking for somebody that can. Any other council member? Did we have anybody sign up? Nobody signed up? You know, again, I'm sorry.